Good evening Kareem. And good evening everyone. No formalities, no problem. Good evenings, Ravanthi. No more good evenings, good afternoons, good mornings, formalities keep them aside. That we don't bother about formalities. Yes Jennifer, uh I'll give you. Yeah. Bring to screen. So Mr. George Gill. Mr. George Gill. Mr. George Gill is the name of the patient. Writing workshop for nursing profession. Writing workshop for nursing profession. Writing workshop for nursing profession. It's a standard session. And we are going to learn the art of enhancing quality. I have taught you about grammar. I have taught you about vocabulary. I taught you sentence structures. I taught you conjugation of sentences. Now I'm going to teach you how to add quality to the presentation. How to add quality to the presentation? That's the point we are going to focus today. We're going to focus today. So that is what we are going to focus today. We are going to see a totally different transcendental concepts today. Yes. So what are we going to focus today? Is one plus one is equal to two? Yes. So if you have one word, how to make into two? How to make, how to transform that one sentence into two? And how to transform that one word into double the size? So dimensional enhancement. Dimensional enhancement or so it is like fooling the, pulling the four corners. Length and breadth. So how are we going to add quality to our presentation? So that's the point of question today. Anybody is there who is going for exam tomorrow? Let me know. There is only one voila going for exam tomorrow. Okay doctor. Fine. Right. Multi-dimensional. Multi-dimensional. Magnification. Multi-dimensional magnification when something is flaunt, flaunt the vocabulary. Flaunt the vocabulary when you use some words, they should be beyond the reach of any other person. Like that you have to present your vocabulary. You have one word, you have to add another word. Yes. Multi-dimensional magnification of quality. When you write something, when somebody notices that there should be only one word of expression or sound, they have to say the one and only wow. Nothing more and nothing less. Your presentation should be unique. Your presentation should be unique. So I am giving you five minutes. I'm going to give you five minutes. I'm not going to describe too much. I'm going to give you five minutes. In this five minutes, you think about all the wonderful words that you know and write so that we are going to use those words. Yes, how will enhance those things? Okay. Quality enhancement techniques. Quality enhancement techniques. After many, after many months I am with my friend. After many months I am with my very close friend. Okay, right. Now what I want you to do is I'm giving you five minutes. Write as many words as possible. As many words as possible, quality words. You put these words in your letter and in your speech. And that means you are going to add fifty marks. Fifty marks. Fifty marks. Yes, that's the thing. Yes. Okay. Exactly five minutes. How many words you will read? I'm going to check. Okay. Activate your brain cells. You know lot of words which you have written. Don't underestimate the power of your brain. Recall all the words, just you close your eyes and you'll get one word. You close your eyes and you get one word. Shoot your words. you might have written number of writing tasks recall the words from those writing talks for example recuperation commencement cessation reducing minimizing deteriorating lifestyle modification lifestyle modification activities of daily living professional support expert guidance because we are learning altogether united we stand divided we fall what all the words today you are going to get if you put those words in the O E T paper you are not going to fail this is these are my words mark my words underline highlight or put quotation marks or do whatever you want that's your choice but these words if you are going to use they will help you drastically hospitalization counseling guidance appropriate management regular monitoring medication non-compliance medication non-compliance emergency assessment emergency assessment professional guidance continuous supervision regular physical exercises regular physical exercises dietary recommendations dietary recommendations prescribed medication prescribed medication necessary education necessary education avoiding complications avoiding complications refraining from strenuous activities refraining from strenuous activities I hope somebody is typing these things which I am telling you refraining from strenuous activities ambulation mobilization ambulation ambulation without any external assistance ambulation without any external assistance mobilizing for short distances mobile mobilizing for short distances accidental scalding accidental scalding extremely severe third degree burns extremely severe third degree burns smoking cessation smoking cessation and alcohol reduction were suggested smoking cessation and alcohol reduction were suggested monitoring supervision observation monitoring supervision observation over-the-counter herbal products over-the-counter herbal products upon admission upon admission during hospitalization upon admission during hospitalization post-operatively post-operatively continuation continuation dietary recommendations dietary recommendations meager financial resources meager financial resources loneliness loneliness survival on meager post-retirement financial benefits surviving on Surviving on a survival on Meager post retirement. Post retirement financial emoluments or benefits. Assessment, examination, evaluation. Examination, evaluation, observation, assessment. Regular daily dressing changes. Regular daily dressing changes. Monitoring the wound site. Monitoring. Regular monitoring. Monitoring the wound site. Regularly monitoring the wound site for Any signs of infection. Regularly monitoring the wound site, incision site. Regularly monitoring the incision site for any signs of infection. Yes. So. We have got fifty three, we need forty seven more. Forty seven more. We need at least hundred words. If you don't hundred or don't write, actually without my involvement, you should have written so many. Huh? Without me. So who are there? Let me see. Blessing. Diana Jil siranga, new candidate. Welcome to the platform, Kausar Meera Kareem, Jennifer Reena, Renuka Ani, new candidate, welcome. Sarangaranavira, Seema, Asmita, Stravanthi, Damara. Good. Right. Okay. Um. Yes. Fine. Then. Uh, okay, I will give you some uh points, okay. If you see these things, maybe you will get some vocabulary. Socializing. Socializing. Okay. Disorientation. 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 Disorientation.
Okay.
Okay, bye bye. Bye, huh? Okay. Huh? Aikam Karu. Esse bandh kar do, kura. Esse nahi chaliye, chand bhot lakshmi. Huh? Kan kafi. Okay, so next. Next. Um. Prescription. Prescription. Suggestion, recommendation, advice. Suggestion, recommendation and advice. Suggestion, recommendation and advice. Guidance, counseling. Guidance, counseling. Required, necessary. Required as required as necessary, required, necessary. Needed, required, necessary, needed. Providing information. Providing information. Emergency assessment. Emergency assessment. Significantly lower the mobility. So the same thing you can use, not in this letter because the same words are there, in some other letter you can use. Significantly lower the mobility. Okay. Significantly. Return to normalcy. Return to normalcy, N O R M A L C Y, regaining Strength, regaining strength. Regaining, recovering, recuperating, regaining, recall, recuperating, recovering. Concerning, relating, regarding, concerning, relating, regarding. So these are some words. Yes. Select on. Copy. Yes, now I am going to show you. Hmm hmm. New. Microsoft document. Okay, vocabulary. Enhancement. Techniques. Yeah. Yes, all your words are here. Okay. Right. Now let us take one sentence, one word now. So Diana Shiva has written ten words at a time, very good. Okay, then Anaga Sargent has written number of words and posted. And see Thomas, and see Thomas, and see. Okay, uh, next. Diana Shiva. Seema Asmita. Okay, fine, now let us see. Consumption. Consumption. Okay. Consumption. Uh. So consumption, what consumption of fluid intake? Fluid intake, we can say, fluid intake. Okay. Excessive fluid consumption. Consumption of excessive fluids. Okay. Excess amounts of fluid consumption. Right, like that you have to see how you have to, okay. Right. So lot of words are there. I will put these words in the Telegram channel later or I will print this one and I will give you, okay. Upon admission. So they should come in the beginning. Postoperatively during, okay, fine, fine, very good. Guidance, counseling. Okay. Very good. Now. Yes, fast. Activate, I am going to teach one letter for doctors and one lesson letter for nurses, okay. Some vocabulary I will be taking like last time how I took first for nurses then for doctors. Okay, right, let us take that. Uh. Yeah. And say. Now see here. Come on, activate fast. If you want to write in the notebook, you can write. See what you have to do is mentally what you are going to do. Okay. George Gale. Okay. Mr. George Gale. Date of birth is given. So take date of birth. Okay. Then. Today's date, fifteenth May twenty twenty one. Afterwards I will take you everywhere, don't worry, you are a nurse. In an old town hospital. Okay. Responsible care of an elderly venue was admitted of, so Uh, inpatient ward. Is now ready to be discharged. Okay. Inpatient ward or outpatient ward or medical ward or whatever you want to see here, admitted. Okay, admitted, that is you have to see there. So this is, okay, uh. Right. Is now ready to be discharged. Next. Write the letter to Miss Jane Gold. So here is Miss Gold, this is not necessary, see remember, which is more that one you have to take, this you avoid now. No need. No need, this one you can avoid. Miss Jane Gold, Miss Gold, which is better, Miss Jane Gold is better. Head nurse, head nurse, take from here. Then Primrose Nursing Home. Primrose Nursing Home. Three Blackwood Street. Old Town, come on, write in five lines, come on, fast, Miss Jane Gold, Head Nurse, Primrose Nursing Health, Nursing Home, Blackwood Street, Old Town, come on, write down. I am making you to practice so that never even in your dream, in your wildest dream, you will not even try to forget, you will dare not to forget. I am going to put it into your dreams that you will never miss these things. So it will become a habit. Like that I am making for you. So if you write like this some letters, then afterwards by default, you will be right. Okay. By default, you will write, write. Primrose Nursing Home. Now you can type in the chat box. Three Blackwood Street, Old Town. That is it. This is the address. Right. Come on, come on, come on, fast. So this is how you are going to write the address. Right, come on, quick. All first words should be capital M J G H M P N H B S O, all these should be capital letters. All these should be capital letters. So by default, you will start writing capital letters once you practice like this. Okay. Yes, very good, four students have come, activation started. Come on, get fast, fast. We are recharging our batteries so that we can go fast in the main letter. Because we are going to write sentences. Yes, six. Very good. Yeah. Thirty seconds more. Okay, now we are moving to the next one. Next one is the date. So ten May twenty twenty one admission. Fifteenth May discharge. Okay, maybe, we don't, we are not sure, we are not sure. We are not sure. So why do we have to go today's date? See that today's date is fifteenth May twenty twenty one. So write the same thing, today's date, this is the date. So on the exam day also, you will write the same day. You are writing exam tomorrow twenty fifth June twenty twenty one, then you today, today is twenty fourth June. So tomorrow is twenty fifth June. So you write the same thing. Twenty five. May. Twenty twenty one. So twenty five May twenty twenty one. Write the name of the month in full. Write the name of the month in full. Date, number three, salutation. Salutation. Okay, salutation. We will go here first line. So Miss Jane Gold. So you will write Dear Miss Gold. So dear. Miss Gold. Put a comma, Dear Miss Gold. Fine. Dear. Miss Gold. So where you are getting this Dear Miss Gold? You had write second name. Okay. For adults, employee, that means adult. So Dear Miss Gold. Dear Miss Gold, Miss and Gold, title and second name. Title and second name. You had write. Title. And second name. The next. Salutation. Salutation, you go to the first page here. So you will say like this, regarding. Regarding column. Mister George Gale. Regarding Mister George Gale. Regarding Mister George Gale, comma. Date of birth. Column. Twenty four. April nineteen thirty six. Regarding Mister Portugal, date of birth twenty four April nineteen thirty six. This is one option if date of birth is given. And this is another option regarding Mister. George Gale. Comma, age. Eighty five. Okay. Anyone you can write, but the priority is. If both are given, write date of birth. If only age is given, write age. Okay. When only age is given, write age. When both are given. Then write in date of birth. Yeah. Come on. So. Aged eighty five, no need to write years. Aged eighty five. Okay, fourth one finished. So this is how you are going to present. Okay. Yeah. So first option is more important. Okay. First option is more important. Right, better to write fastest time. Better to write in the fastest time, date of birth, using date of birth. So that is it. Next, fifth one we will think about later. Now sixth one, Dear Miss Gold, name of the person is there. So what you will write here, years. Okay. Yours. Sincerely. Because name is given. Miss Jones, girl, Miss, Dear Miss Gold, yours sincerely. Yes. Yours sincerely. Next one. Senders address. You can see here. Nurse, Old Town Hospital, Old Town. So four lines are there here also. So register nurse. Register nurse. Register nurse. Okay. Now discharged. So post-operative ward or impatient ward. In patient ward. Yeah. Patient ward. Right. And what is this? Old Town Hospital. Hospital. Old Town Hospital. Old Town. Right. So this is the address, sender's address. Okay. Yeah. So. Done and dusted forever. Very good. Very good. Now we are going to the second part. We are going to the second part is the body of, other than body. So this is, these are extraterrestrials. Above. Okay, now we are going to the main course. We are going to the main course. We are going to the main course. Now here is the case notes. See. Study this now. Okay. Yes. Now. Now here. Okay, what type of letter is this? Okay. Whatever this letter is this. So you have to remember. Okay. So here a responsible elderly who was admitted of is now ready to be discharged. So this is. Is now ready to be discharged, see here the word discharged. Is now ready to be discharged. Okay, admitted and then ready to be, sorry, admitted and. Little tired, please bear with me. Hmm, so. Admitted and discharged. Sorry, admitted and discharged. Okay, now discharged. Right. Ready for discharge. So now. We will, I will tell you the sentences, you have to use those sentences. Okay. You have to use those sentences. I will give you some words which are very important. Now here the words are Mister Gale. Okay, Mister Gale. Fine. Currently is now, instead of now, you use the word currently. Instead of now, you use the word currently and currently Mister Gale is ready for discharge. Currently Mister Gale is ready for discharge. So write like that. Okay. Okay, so now this is diagnosis now. Right. This is the diagnosis. This is the diagnosis. So Mister Gale. Right. Who was diagnosed with urinary tract infection? Okay. Right. Possibly because of a fall. Okay, urinary tract infection. Okay. So. Mister. What are the things that you have to use? Right. So currently. Mister Gale. Currently Mister Gale. Is ready for discharge or is ready to be discharged. Is ready to be discharged or is ready for discharge. Anyway, you can write. Okay, that is one sentence. Now second one is Mister Gale was diagnosed with. Okay. Right. He requires further care. Further care required. So now you have to write using these words. Further care required. Now you can write the introduction, how you can write. Now let us see what are the words that you can use. Now. So this is one. Okay. Fine. Is now ready to be discharged. This is one point we are taking from here. Okay, next to second point, sorry. Second point, Mister George Gale. Copy text, yeah. Yeah, this is second one, Mister George Gale, the name of the patient. Mister George Gale is the name of patient. Then. What else is there? What else is there? Okay. Elder living was admitted after a fall. Okay, that you can write in the second paragraph. Was admitted after a fall, you will write in the second paragraph. Okay. Okay, on which date, everything. So. Next one. Copy text. So further care required. Prepare further care. Okay. Next. What else? I am telling you how to do the information from where. Okay, further care required. Where? At your facility. At nursing home. At the nursing home. So this one. Copy text. See how I am taking information for the instruction. Okay, is now ready to be discharged. Mister George Gale is the name of the patient. Further care required. Okay, that is purpose at your facility or at nursing, at their nursing home. So where is he actually coming from? You see there. So fourteen Long Street, Old Town. That is his address. That is his address. Okay. Fine. Yes. So urinary tract infection. Okay. Next. At your facility. Okay. Then in a, ready for discharge. Okay, to nursing home. For temporary care. Try to understand. For temporary care. Okay, not permanent. Until he recovers. Okay. Temporary care. Right. Discharge to nursing home. Okay. Discharge to nursing home, discharge to Primrose Nursing Home. So discharge to your facility. Being discharged. Go to your facility. At your facility. So here. Here one more point. Okay. Discharge to your facility. Okay. So at nursing home. Okay, at the nursing home. Is being discharged. This is a letter of discharge. This is a letter of discharge. Write a letter of discharge. Yeah, this, this is a discharge letter. See there very carefully. So discharge letter. Is being discharged that one. Fine. So that is dealt with. The next one, what else? The. Gale's history, outline Gale's history. Outline Gale's history, give me, give his history. Okay, what is, what, what is, what, give his history. Okay. And your concerns and recommendations. Okay. Right, concerns and recommendations. Okay. Next. Briefly outline. Mister Gale's history. Briefly outline Mister Gale's history. Now what is going and which is useful, oh you check like that. Okay. So there you are. Is now ready for discharge, ready to be discharged. Okay. Uh, discharged. Um. Discharge to. It's called discharge to. Discharge to which one? Primrose Nursing Home, discharge to the nursing home. Discharge to the nursing home. For ongoing care and appropriate management. Okay, management. Follow treatment. So this is the way how you have to write. Okay, now you can write the introduction. Come on, I am giving you three minutes. Very important. Very important. Modify your styles. And write. Modify your sentences. Modify your notes. Yes. Yeah. I am going to show you some magic now. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yes. I am showing you. Not showing the letter. Because I have already shown you number of letters. Okay. Now I am showing you how to improve the letter. From ordinary to special. Okay. Thank you for taking over Mister George Gale's post-fall care. So you can change it into what style? So let us see here. Come on, how can you change it into passive voice? How can you change it into passive voice? Okay. How can you change this particular sentence into passive voice? Okay. You can say like this, Mister Gale. No need to write full name. First sentence you write only one time, no problem. Mister Gale. Okay. No, because already you use Mister Gale before. So blah blah blah. Come on. Mister Gale. Hmm. Next. Whatever you want to write, you can write. Okay. Fine. Requires. Comma. Requires. Post. For. Care. Yeah. Should try to understand how I am showing you. Okay, that is number one. Or. You can say. Post. For. Care. Is. Post-fall care is recommended. Post-fall care is recommended or advised or suggested. So title makes more sentences first. Afterwards you can join. Mister Gale requires post-fall care. Post-fall care is recommended. We know only one patient, that's why we remove Mister Gale. So if you start with Mister Gale, it will be like this. So we remove that Mister Gale. So post-fall care is recommended. Once time you told, that is understood, that's all. Okay. But more than that. If you see. In the case notes. What is required? What is required? Requires further care. Okay. At nursing home. So you can write there. Okay. At the nursing home. Regard. Okay. Okay. Following. The discharge. Following the discharge. Okay. Following the discharge to the nursing home. So following the discharge. To the nursing home, it's to your facility. Okay. Following the discharge to. Uh. The care one, okay. Following the discharge to the care home. Okay. So I am giving you different, different options. Okay, post-fall care is recommended. Okay, following the discharge. To the care home. Okay. Right. What else? What else? Okay. So now write your own sentences when and where you are writing, you can write your own sentence. Okay. Post-fall care means you can say ongoing supervision and appropriate management. You are supervising and you are managing the situation. Right. I am writing to provide a brief summary of his background and plan for temporary residential care upon discharge. So this one can be written. Requires temporary residential care. So it's temporary. Okay. Right. Temporary. Okay. Where did you get the word temporary? Okay. So. Responsible of the care of an elderly patient was admitted after a fall. Right. Now you can see. Right. Okay. You can see here discharge to nursing home for temporary care. So these are the words how you have to take. Here is that further care. And here is your temporary care. See the confusion, wherever, whatever new word is there, you can take that. Okay. Further care is required. Discharge in nursing home for temporary care, request temporary care. Following the discharge. To your facility. Requires temporary care. Okay. Following the discharge to your facility. Like that you can write. Okay. Next one. Afterwards you can be returned to home as soon as possible. That is different thing. Okay. So now I am giving. So now I am giving. Now write small sentences, do not try to write big sentences. Try to write small sentences. Over discharge to your facility. Okay. Right. Try to think and write. Try to think and, no need to write big, big sentences, write small, small sentences like how I am writing. This incomplete sentence also, it is okay. Okay. Yes. Mr. Gail requires temporary residential care. Mr. Gail requires temporary residential care. Following the discharge. To your facility. Today. I am writing to provide, this one forget it. Okay. So. Mr. Gail requires temporary residential care at your facility. For or Mr. uh requires temporary residential care following the discharge. Okay. To your facility. Yes, come on. Yes. Temporary residential care. Fine. Mr. Gail, an eighty-five-year-old widower lives alone in his own flat. What are the other ways you can write? Come on. What are the other ways you can write? Very good, one person has written at last. Come on. Others also. I will give you quality if you write now, if you do not write, how can I give you quality? So whenever you are writing a date, bring it to the beginning of this sentence. Every sentence there is gear, every sentence there is gear. Very cheap quality. Hence you will not get extraordinary marks. Okay. Because what it is only telling a word active voice, right passive ones. And you are writing passive as most often they are giving wifi, they are giving everything. But still. Yeah. How to take these sentences and change them into passive ones? Check because I will correct all these sentences, I already kept you here. Okay. I have kept you here. Very good. Those who are going to survive. This session are going to provide those quality sentences, man. Mr. Gail. Karma is not required, Diana Shiva. Next one. Mr. Gail said that. Use the word reported and write into passive ones. Mr. Gail later reported that said. Instead of said, you can use reported. Come on improve. So you, I hope you understand what I am telling. Yeah. Instead of said. You can use reported. And remove Mr. Gail. Yeah. So he reported already here, yes, it is there, remove and say reported, here reported is there. Remove this reported from here. And it is already understood. Okay, so let it be reported as it is. He reported active voice. A single episode of vomiting. Palpitations and dysuria. Two weeks prior to this incident. Okay. So you can break that one into two parts. A fever and disurten, with fever and disputation, is this required? Think about that. How every line, every line. He also requires regular monitoring for his non-specific qualities. So how you can say he also requires? Okay. Okay. Right. In. Addition. Comma. Right. Or you can use as well as. Or you can use not only but also, that is later stage. In addition, comma. Regular monitoring. Yeah. In addition. In addition. See then. Regular monitoring. Monitoring. For. Uh the non-specific. Regular monitoring for the non-specific qualities. Well it is. In addition, regular monitoring. The non-specific qualities. Is. Required. Is required. Regular monitoring for his non-specific qualities. In addition, regular monitoring for their non-specific qualities. In addition, regular monitoring for the non-specific qualities. Is required. Okay. They have been changing, is required. In addition, regular monitoring for the non-specific qualities. Is required. Full stop. So now here, next one above. So it in a reverse angle. Hello dipin. And paracetamol. Hello dipin and paracetamol. Are taken. Are taken. Hello dipin and paracetamol are taken. Per managing. Managing. Hello dipin and paracetamol are taken for managing. Okay. Hypertension. And. Osteoarthritis. Okay. Hello dipin and paracetamol are taken passive ones. For managing hypertension and osteoarthritis, osteoarthritis respectively. Full stop. Okay, hello dipin and paracetamol are taken for. Paracetamol are taken for managing hypertension and osteoarthritis respectively. Or. Right. For. Hypertension. Hypertension and osteoarthritis. Have been effectively managed. With. Hello dipin. And. Yes. Right. Hello dipin and osteoarthritis. Okay, hypertension and osteoarthritis have been effectively managed. By. Managed with. Hypertension. And. Osteo. Arthritis. Hypertension and. Sorry, managed with, sorry. Managed with fellow dipin. And paracetamol. Respectively. Yes. Hypertension, osteoarthritis have been effectively managed with fellow dipin and paracetamol respectively. The quality is coming up now. You write whatever you want to write, no problem, come on all of you. Okay. We are improving. Official case notes, if you write as it is there, you are not going to get. Okay, you will get only three fifty-three, forty-three, fifty-three, sixty like that. Right. Mr. Gail now has reduced mobility. Therefore. Needs to be encouraged to do thirty minutes of daily physical activity. So now this one, you reverse. Thirty. Minutes of. Thirty minutes of. Thirty minutes of. Thirty minutes of. Daily physical activity. For thirty minutes. Regular daily physical activity for thirty minutes. For at least thirty minutes. Regular daily physical activity. For at least thirty minutes. Is recommended. Regular daily physical activity for at least thirty minutes. Okay. Is encouraged. But. Mobility enhancement. Increasing. Increasing. Regular daily physical activity for at least thirty minutes is encouraged. For increasing mobility. Regular daily physical activity for at least thirty minutes is encouraged for increasing mobility. Increasing mobility, regular daily physical activity for at least thirty minutes is encouraged. See then how it is going there. Okay. Now. Though. Despite and remove despite and said go. Though. The urinary tract infection. Though the urinary tract information. Infection. Infection. Is being successfully treated with intravenous antibiotics comma. Episodes of confusion. Though the urinary tract infection is being successfully treated with intravenous antibiotics. Episodes of confusion. Till. Blah blah. During the though the urinary tract infection is being successfully treated with intravenous antibiotics. Episodes of confusion still. Although he is keen to return to his home. In spite of. In spite of the. Intention. To. Return home. Instead of the intention. Instead of or despite anyone you can use either in spite of. Or you can use despite. Yeah. In spite of bracket my despite. Right. In spite of or despite. In spite of the intention to return home comma. Right. Okay. An assessment. An assessment. An assessment for. Assessment regarding the. Regarding independent. An assessment. Regarding independent. Living. Is. Adjusted. An assessment regarding independent living is adjusted or recommended or advised. Something like that whichever you feel not exactly all the things will fit in so accordingly you have to fit. So when it should be there prior to the discharge prior to discharge. Okay, earlier. Before discharge. From your facility. In spite of despite. Yesterday I told you though although even though. But yet however sell these things you can use not all our. Fans, there are some repairs also. You have to repair the things and modify this is called repairing things. Something was low quality then you have to improve the quality first identify that the sentences are of low quality. Okay. And now this I am changing now here. Keenness. Okay. Now. Okay. Intention. To keen means intent intention to return home. Intention to return home has been expressed. Comma and therefore comma. Like the intention to return home has been expressed has been mentioned reported. And therefore. Okay. So. An assessment for independent living is strongly recommended prior to discharge from your facility. So this one we will take forward. Okay. Right. Prior to prior from your facility. Right. Your assistance will be greatly appreciated, very simply. Okay. You can write like this. Next. Based on the aforementioned circumstances. And you have the first circumstances are based. Based on the aforementioned circumstances. Your. Support. Based on the aforementioned circumstances comma. Would be profoundly beneficial. Very good, very good, many students are writing. So how to change these things? Fine, depends the words. Okay. So based on the aforementioned circumstances, your support would be profoundly beneficial. Finished. So slowly, 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 take one sentence and modify. So now I am giving you another sentence here. Urinary tract infection. Has been successfully treated with. Intravenous antibiotics. Comma however semicolon. Episodes of confusion. This is the way how you are modifying the sentences. So. Now take this letter and try to you already learned how to write organization. You learn how to write sentences, you learn how to write vocabulary. Okay, you learn how to think and put them on paper. Now you are already learning how to use many different things. So based on this one try to use passive words. He reported a single episode of one meeting. Okay, so he reported remove this. Okay. He reported a single episode of one meeting so just remove this one. A single episode of one meeting palpitations and dysuria. Okay. Have been. Mister Gill was admitted to old town with a fever and disorientation. Intens later attributed to a febrile urinary tract infection. Okay. I find good. You can say however. So modify the quality there. Therefore he needs to be encouraged encouragement should be provided to perform thirty minutes of daily physical activity. For regaining his mobility like that. For regaining his mobility, I bet. Right. Now my question is. It is not everything, it is something, I did not give everything. He needs to be encouraged. Encouragement should be provided, encouragement is required. Okay. To regain his strength for regaining. For a regaining, you can see. Next one. You can write this letter and you can submit if you have not written. Those who have written can try something else. So actually I am very tired, that's why. Okay. So doctors later I will take tomorrow, tomorrow is a mock test. So don't wait. Yeah. Your assistance would be greatly appreciated, why greatly appreciate, your assistance would be profoundly beneficial, better. Why should we appreciate a doctor for doing his own duty? Profoundly. Beneficial. First of. For the patient. Okay. To improve his condition or whatever it is. You write your own sentences and submit. So, that is for today. That is for today for nurses. Right. Right. Good night, have a nice day. Bye bye.